Mic check one. Mic check two. Mic check three. Mic check four. Mic check five. Mic check six. Mic check seven.
Testing one, two, three.
In the Wyoming Lockland area that caused thankfully no not a catastrophe or anything but was was challenging and just highlights the concerns and issues that residents in those areas deal with every day. So in 2024 in October, the federal funds were accepted for the reconnecting neighborhoods grant. The the federal share was $300,000 and the Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission has contributed a matching 75,000 for a total of $375,000. And the main focus of the grant will be used to study east-west connectivity in the north central Hamilton County area, specifically six jurisdictions, six communities. Where I-75 and multiple railways are so those six communities, the city of Reading, city of Sharonville, and the villages of Arlington Heights, Evendale, Lincoln Heights, and Lockland. As you can see on the map, I-75 runs north, south through the middle of these communities. You have the Lockland split just to the south there as well as multiple railroads running north to south. So transportation, if you live in this area, it's it's not super challenging going north to south. The challenge is is east and west going east and west across these railroad tracks. If if traffic's bad on I-75, it's an issue. And there's also the Mill Creek, which goes right through the middle of this as well. So add that into areas of concern. So the these six communities, this this study area was identified to study that east-west connectivity and submitted and granted by the U.S. Department of Transportation. So the goals of this study will be to identify east-west connectivity solutions ultimately. It'll be a robust public engagement process with all those communities to help improve the quality of life for the people who live there and the people who travel through those communities. Ultimately, the goal is a plan that is created, which then can be used for future capital infrastructure grant opportunities. So we can use this plan to submit for future funding opportunities. Say we've got a plan in place. Here's the idea here's to support that and then help these communities apply for those future funds when they're available, whatever the source is. So part of this project will result in preliminary engineering designs to help come up with some of those ideas, a list of recommendations and alternatives for that east-west connectivity. And then ultimately, hopefully, adoption by each local community. So where are we today? You'll see on your agenda on Thursday, we've gone through an RFP selection process. We had multiple RFPs submitted for this planning process. We've gone through that. We had a committee review those and make the selection. And you'll see on your Thursday agenda, a contract with a selected consultant. So we are moving moving forward now. We've the next steps will be for that contract to be on the agenda as well as we're beginning to convene a steering committee for this project. So representatives from each of the six local jurisdictions, staff, of course, and then local stakeholders, OKI, ODOT, a technical team, advisors, those types of things to help guide some of those technical decisions as well. The goal is to have a kickoff meeting later this month, early July, depending on we can pull everyone together. And we'll we'll start with the consultant working through an impact assessment, asset identification, and of course, that public engagement process. Ultimately, creating alternative solutions to help with the east-west connectivity in these communities. And we're expecting this to be about a six to eighth month process, so wrapping up near the beginning of 2026. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. I just have a couple of questions. So as you you've identified the grant funding, you do this community engagement process. So when the the community identifies projects that they would like to see move forward, where does that money come from? Or is it part of these grant dollars?
No, no, so these grant dollars are strictly for the planning process to create a plan. Future funds, those we might be able to identify potential pools of funds that could be reached out to and applied for as part of this process. But they will those have not have not been identified. So like if a new roadway needs to be constructed, let's say, or that's a recommendation, then it's in the plan, which will help support an application for future funds.
Call Eric back if that's nice. So yeah, okay, so this money is just for the planning and the community engagement piece.
Correct, correct.
And then one last question. So as you think through this lack of connectivity that exists now, what would you expect to be an example of a project that might come forward? I mean, do you have some sense of that?
Yeah, we have some really high level things like, I don't know, maybe there's a bridge that goes over the railroad. Maybe there's biking and walking paths to help with the connectivity that that help traverse some of these railroads. I I don't know the exact answer, and we've gotten a lot of questions like that from these communities as well, like what's going to happen? And I my my general answer has been that's what the planning process is going to identify. We'll pull in the the community, the people who live there have an engagement process that helps identify the most appropriate alternatives.
I see. So this is like a strategic plan to allow you to get community input and then go for federal dollars or other.
Yeah, sure.
For the projects.
Yep.
Okay, all right, great, thank you. Commissioner Somerodimus.
Thank you for your presentation. This is such a necessity when I look at these railroads and stop into the middle of Lockland and stand there for several hours. That was one thing that was confusing to me. We had transportation asset and we had all the railroads listed, but they're also the problem. And so it's going to be a major responsibility. So would you have maybe a railroad representative in your strategic planning?
The goal is to have someone on the we have a technical team that isn't necessarily part of the steering committee. A consultation with railroad representatives. That can be a little bit of a challenge finding that person, but the consultant has indicated they've got relationships and contacts that they'll be.
Very good, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Commissioner Reese.
I do want to thank you and I do concur that this is necessary. When I was at the State House, I represented Lockland, was in my district and worked with the mayor there, and it was a major problem. And it only continued to get worse and worse. So I know Mayor Mason's going to be excited about this. My question, though, is it says in October 2024, federal funds were accepted. That's 2024, we're in 2025, things are a little crazy.
Sure.
In Washington, is this already guaranteed? We already got the money, it's already in the.
Correct, so I I spoke to our the the contact with the grant at the USDOT indicated the funds have been obligated. And that we're good to move forward with the contract as 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 planned, so.
Okay, great, that's a part that I wanted to make sure.
No, I'm very worried about that as well.
Right, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. We'll look forward to knowing what the community engagement process comes forward with and and then future projects.
Absolutely.
As you reminded me that I was in a parade not so long ago out in this community in in the Reading area. And the parade stopped because there was a train going through. We were all like, what is going on? And we just sat in our cars and waved at people and, you know, and that was that. But they said, yeah, it happens all the time.
It's the kind of thing that.
Yeah.
They deal with a lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, well, thank you. Thank you all for being here, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, that is the conclusion of the formal presentation today. We've got a couple of executive sessions, so I'm going to move that we go into executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G4 to discuss collective bargaining. And another executive session pursuant to ORC Section 121.22G2 to discuss the sale or acquisition of property.
Second.
Commissioner Drehouse. Yes. Commissioner Somerodimus.
Yes.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.